Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to what is a special meeting today of the San Francisco County Board of Supervisors, Budget and Finance Committee. I am Chair Supervisor Jake McGolda. To my right, Vice Chair Supervisor Sean Elsburn. To further, over to the right side here Supervisor Carmen Chu. And sitting to my left Supervisor Ross Mercarimi. We have but one item on this today. Clerk is Victor Young. Victor, could you please call the first, the one and only item today?
Item number one, ordinance appropriating $498,145 of fiscal year 2007-2008 general fund reserve to the mayor's office of criminal justice to fund a community justice center in fiscal year 2008-2009.
Thank you very much colleagues. This is an item that I think appropriately comes to us during the budget season. It came to us earlier and for budgetary fiscal reasons, I objected to moving forward in this item. I was very, very concerned that putting forth a new program at a time when tens of millions of dollars are being cut out of a lot of our social service programs, a lot of our support programs on mental and behavioral issues, that it was inappropriate to try to move forward with this program. I was objecting to this as I objected in the Budget and Finance Committee and I objected to this when it came to the full board, again because of fiscal issues in particular. There are other issues that have been raised about the community justice center. The proposal going forward has details that certain folks would have, I think, very legitimate concerns about. Again, I returned to the fact that this is a Budget and Finance Committee and I felt that until we went through a budget process and figured out whether or not we could even fund those programs we already had, which were being cut by 22%, that it was very inappropriate to try to go forward such a proposal in a year with very deep fiscal difficulties. I believe that the work of our Budget and Finance Committee, which the five of us, or four of us here today, went through and which is before the full Board of Supervisors today for the first time later this afternoon, was of a sufficiency that we were able to restore a tremendous amount of programs, in fact, a record number of programs, I am told, a record amount of money. It took pulling some teeth, it took pinching and squeezing people in our departments and offices, it took ripping out some money here, ripping out some money there, in order then to restore the kind of level of social services programs, certainly minimally, that we can say we did the best we could with to try to put those in place. I am willing to, today then, as we are still in the middle of our budget process, I think appropriately to move forward and to send this to the full board, a recommendation for $498,000 and change here, to go ahead and move forward with the community justice center. And I would ask my colleagues for support on this issue. I would ask that the item be sent as a committee report, of course, to the full board later this afternoon and that we understand. I don't know if any of the judges are here. I think there is, above all, the one person I spoke to the most on this over time was certainly Judge Ron Albers. I think there is a compassionate desire to help people who need help. And I think that is the bottom line in terms of the policy issue, in terms of the program here, that I believe is not centered on the punitive, but rather is centered on trying to give people an opportunity to get help. And for that, I want to say that I certainly, I do trust the justices who are going in there, that they will deal with people's issues and problems in a way in which a format for justice will be put forward which seeks to help people, that is truly compassionate. That, I know, is a difficult proposal, a difficult proposition, given the fact that the history of courts is not necessarily centered that way, but rather because of the way our courts function in this system of justice in this country, it is often excessively punitive and hardly rehabilitative, you know? And the rehabilitation issue in our justice system is certainly something that over the many decades, certainly that I've been alive, I have seen less and less focus on rehabilitation and too much focus on, I think, you know, very vindictive, punitive approaches within our entire United States justice system. That is very unfortunate because in the 19th century, we were the leading country in the world. We were the number one leading country in the world that was seeking to create and we were being studied by many other cultures. We were seeking to create systems of restorative approaches to justice and rehabilitative approaches to justice. But here we are in the 21st century and I think some of the issues and concerns that people have are extremely legitimate. I would hope that continuing dialogue would occur so that people would understand that some of the list of offenses, the quality of life kind of issues would then, we would sit with the courts and ask them and with our police department and ask them, please don't be running people into the courts on certain kinds of transgressions, rather give people an opportunity to get the kind of services that I think that people really need. Again, I say that this, I believe, is appropriate to go forward now as a fiscal consideration and that we would continue to monitor and get reports. That was part of what was presented to us, where we would get regular reports on what this court is doing, what this justice center is doing and how the results, if you would, and the outcomes would be hopefully positive, above all, positive for those who are brought in and asked to stand before the center and given opportunities to avail themselves of services. And again, I believe that we will have a much better opportunity for services, given the kind of restorations that we have done, we call them add-backs sometimes, things like that, restorations that we have done in the budget process to date. Thank you. I would ask for your support in this item. Supervisor Daly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My position hasn't changed in a year. I'm opposed to the siding of the community justice center, which I actually call the poor court, in my district and serving, pretty much only within my district. And I'm really not sure why we're here this morning. It seemed as if this got at least as good of a vetting in the budget process as any of the other items. And as of one week ago, Mr. Chair, you stood up, a member of this committee Supervisor Elsburn stood up to talk about the crisis with the general fund reserve and concern that we're not being fiscally responsible at the Board of Supervisors because some members of the Board of Supervisors don't support contracting out in the way that this budget was built in terms of the mayor's submission. If the Board of Supervisors didn't agree to contract out, that there'd be a hole in the budget in terms of the general fund reserve. So the, you know, the money found, put a parentheses or quotation marks around the word "found" in the Department of Elections budget, is really not money found in the last couple of weeks. It's money, as I understand it, Mr. Rosenfield, Ben? The money that was quote-unquote "found" in the Department of Elections that for all intents and purposes sits in the general fund reserve? Why the appropriation today is from the general fund reserve?
This was a supplemental appropriation that was pending before the committee just a couple of weeks ago. It pertains to last fiscal year, the fiscal year we just ended. That supplemental drew from the general fund reserve 40708. Given reductions in the supplemental identified by Mr. Rose and then adopted by the committee, it in essence meant that less money was drawn from last year's reserve than had been anticipated in production of the 08-09 budget. So the result is that there is about $500,000 in additional prior year balance that's available to the Board of Supervisors and the mayor, should they wish to appropriate it.
And so what is the current status of the general fund reserve, given the vote on the Prop J's last week?
So the budgeted, general fund reserve 40809, initially budgeted at 25 million, given the rejection by the board last week of the two Prop J's worth 5.1 million, that leaves 19.9 roughly a million available in the general fund reserve. And then, as you're aware, we do have a couple of contingencies that we've talked about before that served to hold a large portion of that reserve.
And this 498145 is scored against that 19, some odd or not?
No, it is not because the budget was as balanced by the mayor's office and proposed to the board, assumes an ending balance on the prior year that's then used as a source in the new fiscal year. Whatever's unspent in the general fund reserve from that year becomes a source for the subsequent year. The mayor's estimate of what that balance would be was understated by this 500,000 because it assumed the board would enact the full election supplemental and now, given the reductions by Mr. Rose in the committee, there is an additional 500,000. It's not otherwise anticipated in the budget.
In reality, we all know in terms of sources, in terms of spending, in terms of grants to come in, what happens, state formulas, whatnot, this is always in flux every time you retaliate, it's up or it's down, or correct?
As a procedural matter, any money that's not spent from the prior fiscal year by the mayor and the Board of Supervisors, when we close the books, which really happens in October, November, any balance above and beyond that that was anticipated in the production of that budget does flow into the reserve. So you're correct in that sense. If we don't otherwise appropriate money, it ends up in the general fund reserve.
And then any overestimate or underestimate in revenue or spending that adds or takes from the reserve?
Yes.
It's almost as if it's a ledger in the city's bank account, checking account.
Your ending balance from one month becomes the starting balance for the next.
So colleagues, I think it's fair to say that, given the votes of last week, although I think that they were telegraphed a little bit, and I think I said in the budget committee process that I thought that would be the reality, that there wouldn't be votes for the Prop J, I don't think that the city is in a position to spend money that we didn't choose to spend in the budget. In other words, I don't think that the current budget balancing situation is better than it was that Thursday, the last meeting of this committee where we had the budget in it, when we forwarded it out, so it was Friday morning and whatever time. But the budget situation does not seem better to me, even with this $400,000 savings that Mr. Rose found in terms of vote that was made in committee and then last week at the Board of Supervisors. So that just speaks to the point of the why we're here. I don't understand why we're here. On the substance of the matter, you know, I think that, again, we have cut 24-hour drop-in services in this city. We had a high-profile fight to try and save the homeless drop-in at Tenderloin Health. Theoretically, we won that fight, colleagues, as we did put monies back into the budget to make sure that those, at least daytime drop-in services, continued. With that said, there are some in the administration who are saying that there may be mid-year cuts, that Tenderloin Health may not get that money. And here we are appropriating money for, you know, what is a pet project of the mayor. And, you know, and fine, he's got a lot of things in the budget that we moved out that were priorities of his that made it through and, you know, a few things that are priorities of his that didn't, just like all of us here in City Hall. And I'm not sure why we're moving forward with this, as I don't think it's good public policy. On a point that's been talked about repeatedly since the courts took over, you know, the management of this project, whether or not this is a homeless court. If you read a columnist today, one who's a little loose with the facts, but if you read a columnist today in The Chronicle, again, it's all about the community justice center and homelessness. When time and time again Supervisor Dufte and some from the courts come forward and say this is not a court about homelessness, that that is, was an original proposal from the mayor and it hasn't been that for, you know, nearly a year. And yet, those who are obviously talking to the mayor's office and the administration keep writing that this is a homeless solution. And I think that before we move forward and fund this thing, you know, they gotta do better in terms of the management of their rhetoric on this center because they say to us, it's not a court for homelessness. They say to the people of San Francisco that it is a court that will address homelessness. If you look at some of the misdemeanors that I'm concerned about, that this actually will be used as a poor court, as a homeless court, lodging, I think, 647 being the most significant of them, I think that what we're going to see on the streets of San Francisco is an increase in officers writing misdemeanor tickets, where they typically have been writing infraction tickets against homeless people for being homeless, to move them into the homeless court. And that is going to be, I think, a far worse outcome because the homeless court doesn't have any services. As a matter of fact, we stopped most of the cuts to services, but we didn't stop all of the cuts to services. And that's the direction we seem to be heading in San Francisco, cutting services, not adding additional services. So I don't understand how we're going to have a homeless court, we're going to put millions of dollars, including federal money, which Mr. Rose will confirm is taxpayer money, into a homeless court that's going to cite homeless people, bring them in there to give them services that don't exist. After we've already had this discussion, you know, until our faces are blue and we're back here doing it again, it makes no sense to me. I can't wait till we have a new Board of Supervisors that can eliminate the community justice center in next year's budget.
Thank you very much. Are there any members of the public who'd like to testify? We do have here some cards and we have about eight or nine cards. So you have up to three minutes. Let me call the cards. Jennifer Friedenbach, Jabari Allah, Molly Glasgow. Good morning.
Good morning and thank you. What we have in this country over time is we have made massive cuts to housing, to healthcare. We've had these major shifts in our economy and as a result, we have these tremendous social issues that are coming up in our urban areas. And instead of moving forward, actually addressing the structural causes of these issues, we keep creating new courts. We have several new courts that have been created in San Francisco already and cities all over the country have been doing the same thing. This money specifically is at question, is $500,000. What that money could be used for, instead of creating yet another criminal justice system to put people through where their issues are not going to be addressed, where there are no services to connect them with, none, no hard services laid out in the budget for the court, is instead, we could be spending that money on restoring 24-hour drop-in services to homeless people, funding a program that would address many of the social issues that this new court was originally intended to address, without people, putting people through the criminal justice system and without putting them through the sham that is going to pretend to be addressing the issues and actually isn't because where the money's actually spent is on the building, on the judges, on the sheriffs, on the transport, on the court's security, on all these things, instead of using that money to actually address the social issues. We know this court will be criminalizing homeless people. We gave you lists of the misdemeanors that would be included in this court. They could easily be excluded from this court to make sure that that doesn't happen. We know the police are gearing up for if this court comes in place, they will be giving people misdemeanors. And what happens when someone gets a misdemeanor instead of an infraction? The impact on their lives in terms of their ability to do what we're all trying to move towards, and that is getting people off the streets, becomes highly detrimental. If someone doesn't show up for court, they're unable, they're going to get a warrant, they'll do jail time, they're much more likely to get tossed off of disability, they lose their housing benefits. All these things are negative consequences. We have tried this over and over in San Francisco. This is not a new idea. We have been doing this for the past two and a half decades. We have been using police to address what is fundamentally a social issue. We need to stop that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. After the next speaker, I'll call some more cards. We have Catherine Njoko, Eli Hu Hertes, and Freddie Powell.
Hi, Jabari Allah, Tenderloin Health. Not optimistic at all that this community justice center will provide an answer to the problem. We've lost over 100 beds with the closure of Ella Hill Hutch, 400 beds over the last five years. Homelessness is a problem. It's going to continue to be a problem. It's not a legal problem, however. It's a social problem. And cutting services and not giving them the mental health care that they need, we're talking about people who need their hands held to go to doctor's appointments, people who need outreach workers to walk them to mental health clinics and the like. We're not talking about people who live by the same code that all of us live by. We need to continue to provide them with the services they need as was mandated in the standards of care. A 24-hour drop-in center is necessary in the city. Right now, as it stands, 150 Otis was an answer, temporary answer, although women aren't allowed there, which seems criminal to me. The fact that women have nowhere to go except what is being called the Oshun Center, which is a temporary fix because they're only allowed to stay there for four hours at a time, is not a solution either. Tenderloin Health has a proposal in for 24-hour drop-in center. They offer medical care, they offer mental health, case management, prevention with positives, health promotions, needle exchange, but the city is talking about funding a mobile homeless connect. When in fact Tenderloin Health is a stationary mobile, a stationary homeless connect that's available 24 hours a day, or right now 12, but could potentially be available 24 hours a day, seven days a week to do the same thing. I think we need to alleviate criminalizing the homeless and return services so that they can get the access and the care that they need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, supervisors. I hope you all slept well last night. My name's Molly Glasgow and I'm from the Coalition on Homelessness. I'm not here to pick on the way that this was brought back into the budget and the short notice that was given to the community that will actually affect, but I'm here because it appears that the city is making sleeping a crime. There are a number of misdemeanors that are given out for the very act of sleeping. There are also infractions that are given out for the same purposes, but if the CJC would prosecute these misdemeanors, it would give the police department more of a reason to give out a misdemeanor rather than an infraction. And these are quality of life offenses. They're quality of life offenses for what the SFPD calls frequent offenders. These are people who dare to sleep on the street every night and try to sleep every night. They're not frequent offenders and they're not criminals. The misdemeanors that we're talking about in particular are 23A MPC, which is obstruction of streets and sidewalk, 97A MPC, which is camping in a house car, 97B MPC, which is camping in a car, 647 CPC, obstruction of streets and sidewalks, and the biggest is 647JPC, which is lodging and encampment. Now, I can understand why maybe some of these were made in the first place, but at this point, they're being used to criminalize people who are sleeping on the streets and not being used for what they were made for. We don't want to have people sleeping on the streets. I'm not up here fighting for the right to sleep on the streets, but I'm up here because you don't have a place to go, sleeping on the streets is not a crime. Especially with the state of public services in this city, there's often no other choice. What you gotta do is you gotta bundle up what you have, find a doorway, lay down a piece of cloth and lay down on top of it. And it's not a sob story, but it's just the reality of life in this city. It's not safe. We would all benefit from a safer city and safer streets, but criminalizing things because people are poor will not solve this. So if you truly want people off the streets and you truly want them off the streets, not because they're a nuisance, but because they're people, the money needs to go towards services like a 24-hour drop-in shelter that would give people a safe place to go and that would help them exit homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Freddie Powell and I am currently a citizen of San Francisco and homeless. I feel that this policy is akin to beating someone in the head to cure their headache. How can you create a debtor's prison penalizing the most desperate and vulnerable citizens of the city? I'm tired of officials talking out of both sides of their mouth. This issue of homelessness is going to increase dramatically. The economy continues to worsen. I've never seen such a cold and calloused approach in dealing with this issue. Is it morally right? Is it just? I would truly recommend an examination of one's heart rather than looking for what is politically expedient. Mobile homeless connect would result in homeless disconnect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Call some more cards. Freddie Powell, James Macini, Richard May, please, thank you.
Thank you, supervisors. My name is Eli Hernandez. I'm a homeless advocate. As Supervisor McGoldrick yourself said and Supervisor Daly has stated that services were cut during this past financial year. These services are essential to survival, to life, which I want to know whose quality of life, the rich quality of life or the average citizens of San Francisco's quality of life? Each one of you here represents your constituents' voices and your constituents' voices are saying, do not criminalize me because I have no home. The $500,000 for the general fund should and really needs to be appropriated toward housing, not criminalizing somebody just because they got turned away from a shelter. There's approximately 6,000 homeless people in the city and only 1,500 shelter beds. These numbers do not add up. The reason why somebody's getting criminalized is because they have no home, plain and simple. I'm asking this committee to not, I repeat, do not approve these allocations for these funds to criminalize somebody because of their living status. It is fiscally responsible for you to say no to this. Thank you.
My name is James Keoncini and I'm with Planning for Elders in the Central City. I work with seniors and people with disabilities and they're going to be extremely impacted by this situation too. A lot of seniors are homeless and a lot of people with disabilities are out there trying to reach services. I would just like to say one thing, that I completely oppose this and our organization opposes it too, and the criminalization of poor people will not end poverty. You know, this is just a kind of microcosm of what happens historically at the national level in this country, you know? It's like there's always money for war, there's always money for more police, there's always money for these repressive practices, but the simple thing, housing, services will reduce crime, will make people more healthy, and that's just like pulling teeth to get that money. And so people are out there on the streets and they're going to be tracked into this poverty court. That's what it is. It's like really, you know, taking me back to the 19th century and some of the terminology, even some of the terms that are used, like serial inebriate and these kind of things that are being thrown about. It's really denigrating and dehumanizing. And compassion, I take issue with the argument that this is some sort of compassionate approach because compassion is rarely instituted from behind a jail cell or a police badge or coerced, forced, forcing into treatment. So I would just like to say that this money needs to be spent on housing, on services, on the 24-hour drop-in capacity of Tenderloin Health. I mean, the money's there and I don't know how many people here have actually experienced it, just the fact of like, it's 11, it's 12 o'clock at night, you're in between houses, apartments, and you've got nowhere to go. I mean, if you're fortunate enough to have a place to crash, a friend, okay, that's one thing, but if not, then it's an extremely scary situation to be in and it puts you in a very vulnerable situation. So that's going to be increasing crime. It's going to be creating more victims by not having 24-hour drop-in services. Please eliminate this terrible political ploy at the last minute. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please, and then more cards. Marlon Crump, El Carrera, Dr. Norm, sorry, not, but Texan, Texel, sorry.
Good morning. My name is Richard D. May and I live and work-
My name is Richard D. May, and I live and work in the Tenderloin. I also have a degree in economics from Westfield College located in Western Massachusetts. So I believe that I can speak with some expertise and relevance on this particular issue. For those of you that might not know, the field of economics is defined as the study of the allocation of resources. I would just like to say that from my perspective, this is an extremely inefficient use of a finite resource. Oh, and by the way, I vote.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, supervisors. My name is Marlon Crump. I'm from Poor Magazine. I was just sitting here, listening to everybody here, and still talking about the poverty courts, community courts, whatever you want to call it. As everybody here would agree, all it is, is the same thing over and over where it continuously pushes people who are homeless, who are poor, who basically don't really have the basic human needs of life, push them right into a jail cell. And I almost, when I was sitting here, I heard, I think I heard Daley or somebody up here mention this, and it's kind of funny, but my question is, how the hell can somebody say that this is a compassionate approach to address homeless solutions here in San Francisco, California? I think it's very, very, you know, crazy and insane that the mayor of this city, or any city for that matter, would actually come up with a proposal that would actually push a person for sleeping on the street or sleeping in a doorway somewhere, or just sleeping out in general. So whenever somebody gets evicted from their house, the next approach for them is to go to jail. That's what it seems like to me. And I have to say this to the budget committee, what is wrong with y'all that y'all would actually even consider this kind of proposal? I mean, you have to put yourself in their position. How would you feel if you were evicted, you know, whatever, whatever reason, you couldn't pay your rent and stuff, you didn't have enough money? Next thing you know, you have a police officer come up to you telling you, you know, get up and, you know, here, let's all have a ride here, go into the squad car, and guess what? We go into the community court center. And next thing you know, you're sitting there looking all crazy and looking all sad, looking all depressed and stuff. And that, my friends, is very, very inhumane, and I really, really hope that someone deep down in y'all's souls, that y'all would actually approve or even consider this anymore about this considered proposal, because it's very, very ridiculous, and it's very, very more criminalized to people who are in poverty. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And again, I think I mispronounced your name. Norma, Dr. Norma. And again, I'm sorry, I can't quite read your handwriting, but is it T-Texal? I'm not sure. I'm sorry. Next speaker. Thank you, sir.
Hi. So, good morning, supervisors. So, my name is Michael Carrera, so working for the Coalition on Homelessness. So, well, one more time again, so I read the newspaper every single day. I see what new views from Chronicle attacking and criticizing the homeless people, criticizing the organization who is fighting and helping homeless people. So I can tell you, I am formerly homeless. I live in the street. I am, in the past, I use drugs, and I have oppressed and replaced by the policemen all the time. So why we need to have another court around Tenderloin? Why we need to have a discourse? We don't need discourses. We see already the policemen you put in, or the mayor putting in the poor neighborhoods, they oppress and replace the people. That happens to me when I come to work, when I go outside, when I go to walk in and get my lunch or get a coffee. The police always is behind us. Why? Because one of the supervisors supporting and supporting new son policies to put in one court or put in more policemen, put in more courts like arresting and oppressing the homeless people. We are not criminals. The homeless people are not criminals. I can tell you, we are real persons, we are human beings. And I can tell you, too, because the Coalition of Homelessness take care of me from the streets, and you see me right now. I have fought in 15 years, clean and sober, and doing my thing the right way. I don't accept it, and I don't want to accept it to one of the supervisors putting money and discourse and putting people in jail. The jail is not the solution. This money they need to go to housing, real housing for homeless people, for homeless families, too. So I can tell you, I don't accept it. Please don't give you this money for courts. We need the money for housing. We need the money for real services for the homeless people. Thank you so much, and have a good day.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. If there are any other speakers, if they could please line up in the middle aisle.
Good morning, supervisors. God bless us all. Anyway, I'm here today because I'm representing not only the Filipino-American community, but the entire communities of San Francisco. I guess the question we should ask ourselves is whether or not we are helping really the poor and the needy, of which each one of us are here to do that. For the last three years, this is my 20th year of serving the city and county of San Francisco, serving all communities, serving all people, and I don't regret it because I have seen that in the government, in the city, not only this San Francisco, I have seen. I'm a doctor of public administration, and I know, I'm also an economist. I would not have done maximizing our resources for the last 20 years that the mayor's office community development funded us for 17 years and then cut it for the last three years, and I have not gotten any single penny of my salary despite my home mortgage. But I want to prove to all of you who can do this. Well, I'm telling this because I'm here on behalf of the homeless people. Last Friday, we have a hearing at the Superior Court, hearing and settlement from 12 o'clock to 6 o'clock. Our client, who was ejected by the landlord, well, I cited the federal law of ADA, disabled seniors who are evicted, and by God's grace, we won the case. I was there with my pro bono lawyer, and we won, and I was, we were both negotiating, and really, I'm here for the homeless people. And there are many homeless people, by the way, not only in our community, and I'm dealing with that right now. That's the reason why I cannot leave this job, because I really want to serve the homeless and the needy, and each one of us. You know what? I want you to know, each one of you, that you are there in your offices, but you don't know how hard it is to really deal with day-to-day people coming to us crying and everything. I want you to know that. So we need your help. I want these funds to be allocated for the homeless people. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any? Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Catherine Lumkako. I have been a proud Bay area resident my whole life, but the way the community is destroying the state of diversity and community that this city once thrived upon with no remorse whatsoever is disgusting. I am speaking for Poor Magazine. I am an intern and resident at Poor's Raised Poverty Media Justice Institute. I'm also speaking for tiny co-editor of Poor Magazine. There is no logic to incarcerating people for the sole act of being poor. Why does San Francisco want to be known for the criminalization of poor people? Instead, the $500,000 surplus should go to service providers like Tenderloin Health to provide services to people in poverty, and thank you, and think about that.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? I have no more. We'll close public comment. Colleagues, and I have to say, I am very moved by the public testimony. I know we are living in one of the coldest periods, I don't mean anything to do with meteorological conditions, but certainly one of the coldest periods in modern American history in terms of what has happened at the federal level. And I'm not even just talking about this Bush administration, I'm talking since Ronald Reagan was elected till today. I have watched this for nearly 30 years, and I have to say that I have been appalled by the socioeconomic disarray that this country engages in. There are other places on this planet that are truly far more compassionate than any level of care in this country has demonstrated in the last 30 years. I'm now over 60 years old, and I have watched just personally, besides the fact that I, too, like anybody else, have had the ability to read a little bit of history. I was an English teacher for many years, and those of you who have read Charles Dickens can simply look back and see the state of Dickensian England and the incredible appalling conditions that did exist, and there were, in fact, debtor prisons, and I know that you all are very aware of that, where people would be put in jail because they owed money. And certainly, Charles Dickens himself, he used to go visit his father, who was in a debtor's prison, horrible conditions. We're not too far behind a lot of that. I agree. This is not an easy decision to go forward with this. I myself, I've stated it before because it's part of what has my personal past history, I was homeless for quite a while, not for years, just for a matter of about four or five months once, in another country, in France, in Paris. Going to be homeless, that's not a bad place to be homeless. They have different services and things. That's many 37, 38 years ago. They have many opportunities. When I slept on a floor in an abandoned building, I was called a squatter. A lot of people living like that, but we managed to all hang together, young and healthy. I didn't go through it for years and years, so I cannot compare my experience to those who are out in the streets year after year. And I think that one of the key things that this center seeks to do is really to try to help people. As difficult as that may be to swallow, and it's even difficult for me, I do believe that it will be a place where people can find help. That's the bottom line for me on this center. I believe it's a place where so many people who are out in the streets, the word homeless didn't even get used before about 30 years ago. Never heard that word. You had all kinds of other problems. But I think this is a place where there will be some opportunity for people who many, many years ago would have gotten help in mental institutions, and because of the kind of drugs that became available, a lot of people were able to get out of mental institutions where they were stuck for life, and that helped a lot. But a lot of people still have real serious problems with substance abuse and mental behavioral problems, and cannot necessarily, I think, walk in and ask for the help that they may need because they are at a state of incapacitation in terms of their own ability to help themselves. And I think that those of us in the community who can try to help have an obligation to do what we can. I'm not going to give a whole litany of what happens in the Human Services Agency that the city has and all the CBOs that we try to fund to help out, but I think we are trying, and I think this is something that can help. I think it's something that we'll look at really carefully. Again, I know it's difficult to swallow, but I believe that it's worth giving it a try. I honestly believe it's worth giving it a try. It ain't perfect. Adam and Eve got us kicked out of paradise a long time ago, the first eviction, as we sometimes humorously say, and we're coping and trying to cope in a society that I think, as I say, has become very cold, very cruel, and a place in San Francisco where we'd like to think we're a bit of an oasis, we'd like to think that we're trying to help people in a way that's different from so many other places that just chucks people, chucks people out. And, you know, we're not getting a hell of a lot of help from the feds, we're not getting any significant help from the state. And, you know, I know what the budget was the last, the last two years of the Jimmy Carter administration, the president, and that, that was the end of so many of the housing support programs, because as soon as Ronald Reagan got in, they flipped all that around, and here we are. So this country shifted in a very negative way about 28 years ago. It's very, very strange sometimes to think how we got here, but pretty horrible. Anyway, I am, I am prepared to go forward with this, of course, having sponsored it. There are a couple of other pieces I would like to introduce, and then our colleagues certainly would, certainly would want to speak. There are a couple of things that would need to be done in addition to this. I'll bring those up in a moment. Let's, Supervisor Daley would like to speak first, then I'll come back to this. Thank you, Supervisor.
Mr. Chair, maybe you're heading in a direction that I was going to recommend, and while I'm not going to support this item, I think that if the appropriation does move forward, there needs to be some administrative language along with it. And I would recommend the committee consider the language from the proposed initiative ordinance submitted by the mayor to the voters with the caveat that based on input that we've heard from members of the public, that we amend the section in terms of setting up the Community Justice Center that discusses the types of crimes, and that's in Section 30.1, Community Justice Center, subsection 2, that the court dedicated to hearing misdemeanors, nonviolent felonies, or other suitable criminal cases that arise in the neighborhoods of my district, that we explicitly put that this court is not to handle crimes that are related to the state of homelessness, and I would further recommend that we go ahead and specifically mention as an example of those 97A of the Municipal Police Code, 97B, 120-2D1 through 120-2D4 of the Municipal Police Code, and then 647C and J of the State Police Code, and 3.12 of the Parque Code.
Supervisor, is that a motion? You have a second for that motion. No second for the motion. Supervisor Ellsberg.
Motion to send the item forward to the board this afternoon as a committee report.
You have a second for that motion. Supervisor Chu, thank you. I want to support that motion, and I also want to...
Just can I get a point of clarification? With no administrative language, just appropriation with no fleshing out the program at all?
First of all, let me just, what Supervisor Daley has just said, I'm not in disagreement with what Supervisor Daley has just put forward. I would like to give it some consideration and thought and figure out the, I guess I'll call it the smoothest way to do that, to indicate that I agree that people sleeping in their vehicles and trying to find a place to sleep should not be dragged into court. And so leave it at that. I'm not sure exactly how to make that happen, but I will seriously sleep on that, as I like to sometimes say, in other words, mull it over, noodle it over, think about this and that. And I don't mean to overuse the word sleep here, but, yah, yah, no joke. But the thing is here, too, there are some amendments that I would like to offer, we send this to the full board later this afternoon, at which point I think that will offer an opportunity again for us to take this to the following week and have more of an opportunity to think about some of the pieces and parts. But later on this afternoon, I would like to offer some amendments to put together the full package in terms of making this happen. So I would call the question, we have a motion in a second. You take the vote.
Motion to recommend this to the full board as a committee report. Would you like a roll call?
Yes, please.
Supervisor Ellsberg? Ellsberg, aye. Supervisor McCreary? McCreary, aye. Supervisor Daley? Daley, no. Supervisor Chu? Chu, aye. Supervisor Goldriff?
Aye.
Goldriff, aye. The motion passes.
Thank you very much. That completes the work of this committee this morning. Thank you, everybody concerned, and we are adjourned. Thank you.